Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting tonight, Thursday, October 5th, 2023. I call our meeting to order and I ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next section of the agenda is our public comment section. This section of the agenda is reserved for people in attendance who wish to briefly address the board. We request that comments be limited to three minutes or less. People wishing to comment should type comment and your name in the chat box and you will be recognized.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I request that you formally, under additions and changes to the agenda, bring it up to the board about Old Business 8C where we have an asterisk that we open that back up for discussion.
Okay. Anybody have an issue with doing that?
Nope.
Okay. That we will do. Apologize for that. So moving again on to item four.
Amy DiMaggio has a public comment.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Amy DiMaggio and I am the president of the Coalition on Diversity and Equity, otherwise known as CODE. I'm here to ask the board to support the proclamation for Indigenous people being introduced this evening. On behalf of CODE, I want to state that CODE believes that acknowledging and honoring the first stewards and residents of our land on which our communities now exist is important. Honoring the Indigenous people who come before us is one step to understanding the true history of our communities. We would like to begin this meeting by acknowledging that the land on which we gather this evening in all our homes is the territory of the Mohegan and the Wongonk peoples who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We thank them for their strength and resilience in protecting this land and aspire to uphold our responsibilities to their, according to their examples. Thank you to Tiffany Teal for agreeing to introduce this proclamation for Indigenous people and for the entire board for considering to adopt it. Let our government, community government be at the forefront of acknowledging and appreciating the contributions and sacrifices of Indigenous people that came before us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
That looks like it for now, Dan.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Our good to know special recognition. Since Tiffany put forth this proclamation, would you want to read that Tiffany?
I'd be delighted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I also, you know, I appreciate the kudos from Amy DiMaggio, but she was the one that helped write this proclamation. She wrote the whole thing, so thank you for that. Just taking your words to heart, Mr. Chairman, that it is important that we acknowledge Native Americans and their contributions to society and indeed that, you know, we are on, you know, stolen land and to acknowledge their culture. So I'm pleased to read this. I'll do so. Is there any way you can make it a little bigger, Donna? Is that possible or should I make it bigger on my end? Oh, yeah. Oh, good. Perfect. Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Whereas we recognize that long before the state of Connecticut was created and the town of Hebron was founded, diverse Indigenous communities called the land home. They raised families, worked the soil, traded goods with others, and established cultures rich in political, artistic, spiritual, and environmental legacies that continue today. And whereas the town of Hebron acknowledges and honors the first stewards and residents of the land on which our community now exists, the Mohegan and Wongonk tribes. And whereas we recognize the five Indigenous tribes recognized by Connecticut State law, the Scotticoke, Golden Hill, Pogusset, Mohegan, Mashentucket, Pequot, and Eastern Pequot, each with its own history and identity, and honor their remarkable resilience and commitment to sustaining their traditions and educating others about their history and culture. And whereas the town of Hebron recognizes the historic and contemporary significance of these Indigenous peoples and values the many contributions made to our community through their knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural traditions that have shaped and still shape the character of our town, region, and state. And whereas we recognize that we as a community have much to learn about the history and culture of Indigenous peoples, including their respectful and loving stewardship of the land. Now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen for the town of Hebron, in the pursuit of shared responsibility and promotion of knowledge about Indigenous peoples, unifying communities, combating prejudice, and eliminating discrimination against Indigenous peoples, recognize Monday, October 9th, as Indigenous Peoples' Day and encourage residents to educate themselves and their children about the role, culture, and traditions of Indigenous people.
Okay. Hearing the proclamation. Any comments? I'm going to make a comment after we vote on it. But all in favor, please signify by saying aye. And I have Peter.
Peter Casper, aye.
Okay, Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
And myself, aye. What my comment was, and this goes back a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of years. Fifty plus. I used to live out in Nebraska. I actually knew Native Americans from the Midwest. And I did a Bing search and one of the things that I found that I'm a little troubled with is that there are still forty-five treaties, this is per Bing, that Congress has never ratified. Granted, some of these have been, the stipulations have been addressed. But, you know, through all the Indian wars and everything else, to this day, as I say, forty-five treaties were never acknowledged and voted on by our Congress. So I just thought that was a kind of an interesting note. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, appointments and resignations.
Is this where you'd like me to jump in, Mr. Chair?
Sure, please.
Okay, and just for an FYI, Mark Rivera reached out and is having a little bit of trouble with technology, but he's trying to get on. He should join us shortly.
Okay.
Under item 6A of the Town's
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm here, Andy.
Okay. Perfect. Under 6A, under the Town's agenda, appointments and resignations. The first one is Hebron Historic Properties Commission Appointments. Hebron Properties Commission Appointment Attached as Correspondence Received from John Barron Unaffiliated, expressing interest of being appointed to the Hebron Historic Properties Commission and below is a proposed motion.
Okay, I'll read the motion. I led to understand that neither one of these two people were able to make it tonight. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen to appoint John Barron as an alternate member of the Hebron Historic Properties Commission with a term to run until 2023. Anybody have any comment? As I said, this is a alternate. So with that, Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, nay.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, nay.
And I was going to give him a shot, but with the two nays, that appointment has been rejected. The next would be the Hebron Historic Properties Commission Appointment for June Danaher. And again, she did attend a meeting the other day. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint June Danaher as an alternate member of the Hebron Historic Properties Commission with a term to run until 2025. Again, she's not here. But as I say, I know that, actually, she lives in a very old house. I'm not sure of the actual age, but it's, it's definitely an old house over on Reedy Hill. So Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. So let that be duly noted. Our next thing, Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item seven on the Agenda Town Manager Report. I'm happy to report that we have been conducting interviews for a new Public Works person or personnel. Also, we're looking for a building maintainer at this time to replace Willie Bell, a thirty-year employee that did mostly janitorial services, but did everything else that we're starting to realize we didn't know he did. So we're moving forward with that, hopefully, to at least get the buildings or keep them in in the clean and safe for the employees. We had a, we're sent out the CIP budget request to the department heads and we had a kickoff meeting earlier in the week, so that's underway. That'll be coming forward, so believe it or not, the budget process has been started. I've been asked by the Tenels and the Flower Girls to let the Board of Selectmen and the community know that on October 14th, at nine AM, there'll be a barn raising in the center of town. And the Flower Girl's involved in the Something Simple Cafe. And that should be something to see, so she's hoping the community will get involved with that. So I wanted to make sure that we're supporting that and letting everybody know and bringing it up at the Board of Selectmen's meeting tonight. I don't know if you know the Flower Girl, you don't want to get her on your bad side, so I just covered my bases. The town was fortunate. The town was fortunate enough to receive a steep grant in the amount of $474,000 for the Hebron Green and pedestrian connection and parking improvements. So that's great news for us. That's for the center of town along that same area. So we'll continue to try to beautify that, that area and maintain it and keep it as our showpiece. I've gotten notice from our finance director, a long-term finance director, that she will be retiring. So we're going to start the process for looking for a new finance director. Elaine Overall's been with us for about thirty years. So that's going to be hard shoes to replace. There's not a lot of finance directors out there. And there's a lot of municipalities looking for finance directors as we speak. And also, believe it or not, we're getting ready for winter. Cashew held its snowplow rodeo today in Wallingford. Hebron participated along with twenty other towns. It's a safety rodeo to get them to hone their skills, training seminars. So it's a good thing, but it's right around the corner. The roof has been installed in the Gold Schoolhouse. For people that don't know what the Gold Schoolhouse is, that's the old historic schoolhouse that was moved up from Henry at the Greens property up to the town complex where the town hall is more adjacent to the Horton House. You'll see a nice new cedar roof on that. Came out very nice. That finally got completed after all this rain that we had. We got it finished. I'm working to award the Wall Street sidewalk project after many, many years. So we're trying to move forward with that. I plan on awarding that hopefully next week. And then we'll have a timeframe and a schedule when that work can be completed. And mostly, we're working with all the new department heads that we have on the transition in the town projects that we have. So with all the new people we have, that's taken up a lot of time, but we're willing to do it and we're moving forward in a positive manner. And that's it.
Okay, don't choke the messenger, but there's a possibility of, again, rain next Saturday. Will this barn raising be still going on? Do we know or should we keep our ears open?
You know, that's a great question. I didn't ask that question. I was only given the information and I didn't put the two together, but I can ask and we'll put that out on social media if there's a situation with the weather that postpones that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments? Hearing none. Our next item would be Old Business. Andy?
Okay, so on our Old Business, item 8A. The first one is American Rescue Plan State and Local Recovery Fund Approval. We've been adding this to every agenda. Last meeting, the Selectmen voted to change some stuff around, so what we have is attached is an updated ARPA Status Report with funds available to be held in reserve of $130,496. And there are funds from the police vehicle line item that can be returned to the ARPA reserve in the amount of $13,655.
So that, excuse me for jumping in, so that number is not part of the 130,496.
The way it's written here doesn't look like that. Donna, is that part of that or is that in addition to the 130?
That the thirteen thousand is not in the 130. You would have to, you would have to vote to return that.
Would that be an appropriate motion then for us to do tonight?
Absolutely.
Okay, I make a motion that we return to the ARPA Fund to the ARPA Fund bottom line, the unused police vehicle line item of $13,655. Does that sound appropriate?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Just something for everybody to kind of think about, that's fairly, fairly close, I believe, to the amount that was removed or that, that Chief Starkle had surrendered. Or I want to say, was it the active shooter? Mark, can you help me on that?
I thought all the things that, that we were using for the active shooter program were passed, so I'm not, I'm not sure what you're referring to, Dan.
Okay, I'm looking at it right here. Fire Department, active shooter, tactical gear.
Oh, yeah, I can help you now. Now I know what you're talking about. I'm sorry. That, that was to get the firefighters who are participating in the Rescue Task Force who come in with the police and rescue victims. That was to get them bulletproof vests and safety gear so they don't have to wait outside and then come in and save people. So that's what that was.
Okay, I mean, I don't think we're ready to vote on that tonight, but, you know, just again, my little brain keeps twisting and working. Something to think about.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So bear with me, just for the record, you have a vote that was voted on by the Board of Selectmen to stall any other future projects until we move forward with the list that we have approved to see where we end up before we start adding anymore. So you would have to reverse that to entertain any other items. I just want to make sure that that's still on.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not looking for any vote tonight, but I'm just saying, you know, something for us to keep in mind, that was something that we had taken out. You know, when we get to that point. You know, and I'm not sure when that point will be, but I'm just, just trying to throw it out there. You know, but okay. Again, any other comments or?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Chairman, if I might. I think, so what I'm seeing here, and I appreciate the update of the total funds and reserve, that's quite helpful. There are, however, a lot of projects that we approved in round one that have not yet been completed. There are some that are in round two that have not been completed. And so while I think it's helpful to see that they're in progress, I would like to see for the next meeting or the meeting after perhaps a little bit more detail entered into this spreadsheet. I mean, I don't want it to get too wordy. I know how, you know, spreadsheets are. But I don't think in progress is enough, right? Because there's just a lot of outstanding work here. So I think it would be helpful to understand with a little bit more detail on some of these, especially some that have been in progress for a while. So that would be a recommendation I throw out there. Not accelerating to the point of needing a special meeting, but I would like more details than in progress when I see a project has been that way for some time.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I mean, and, you know, I'll agree. I mean, there's certain things, this, you know. The reality is we only have three people that are trying to literally do this mountain of work to try to get all this stuff going. You know, so I, we have to understand that too, but
Yeah, it's not a condemnation. It's just, because I get it. I mean, we are a small town and we rely on a very small, yet excellent team. I just want more detail. If something has been in progress for months, you know, is that because we're pulling together a grant application? Is it because X, Y, Z? That's all, like, just understanding where it is so that we don't, you know, have to keep asking the same questions.
Yep. And talking about grant applications, because it's staring me right in the face. Andy, did you want to just step in real quick and talk about the Pendleton Drive to Library Pedestrian Bridge, steep grant?
Yeah, so Tiffany's question is very appropriate and, and that's a great project to start with. So those are all moving forward and I know the word in progress may sound stale, but what that is, is being designed. The design is now in front of planning and zoning. We have to wait for the approvals. We got to get approval from SHPO. So we're going through the process. Same thing with the pickleball courts. They've been designed. They're in front of planning and zoning. So we're just going through the processes that we would have to like anybody else before we could actually move forward with the construction. At least of those two projects, just to give you somewhat of an idea.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you. Our next would be 8B?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, 8B would be disband the Public Works Building Project Survey Committee and establish Department of Public Works Action Committee. At December 21st, 2023, Board of Selectmen's meeting consensus was to disband the Public Works Building Project Survey Committee and establish a new Department of Public Works Action Committee to handle further project communications. The composition in charge for the new committee should be discussed and finalized before actual appointments are made. So in the present, the building committee in their makeup or their design, they have in that, that they can add people or people to a committee for a certain project. I just want to make sure the Selectmen are aware of that. You can move forward however you want and even if you don't have enough people or what you think you need tonight, you can still add at a later date. So just to give you some ideas. And then there's a proposed
Okay, read the motion and open it up for discussion. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen disband the Public Works Building Project Survey Committee effective immediately and extend sincere thanks to Peter Casper, Andrea Latanzi, Mal Lecter, Mark Stewart, and Terry McManus for their time and efforts working on the Public Works Building Project Survey. Any discussion on that? I just want to thank them for, again, a lot of work, a lot of time. Again, thank you. No other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. That motion passed. The next would be for the composition in charge for a new committee. It was up for discussion. We had talked about it a little bit last month. I'll read the motion and open it up for discussion. Move the Hebron Board of Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint a nine-member Department of Public Works Action Committee consisting of members of the Hebron Public Building Committee, the Hebron Public Works Building Project Survey Committee, and interested Hebron taxpayers. The purpose of this committee will be to handle the day-to-day activities involved with determining cost, location, and all required plans required to construct a new Department of Public Works facility for the town of Hebron. It will be the committee's responsibility to report all activities to the Board of Selectmen, have all expenditures approved by proper town bodies, and to prepare and publish timely communications to the public at large. This committee will become active and enforce upon passage of this motion and appointment of a quorum. And the members to be considered for the appointment would be Peter Casper, Wayne Warwick, Richard Steiner, David Foster, Mal Lecter, Andrea Latanzi, and Mark Stewart. To be appointed when people volunteer, but not required for the committee to begin to conduct business would be taxpayer number one and taxpayer number two. So open it up for discussion. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I note that there's a note in here that says the following information is for discussion only at this time, indicating that formal action should be taken at the October 19th meeting. I just have some clarification. Is that how we want to proceed? Do we want to do this tonight? You know, I, I'd like to understand the composition of the members to be considered for appointments so I understand who's coming from where. But it looks like that the formal action should be taken at the next meeting. That's what the note says, so I just like clarification.
Yep, and I'm reading that also and you are correct. I know we had discussed it at last, our last Board of Selectmen's meeting, so I was, I didn't, I didn't read that. So thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Andy, would you have something you wanted to add? I thought you were asking to be recognized.
Well, that's, yeah, it just, this is one of the procedures that we have in place is even though we discussed it last week, we didn't have the formal composition in front of the board, so this would be the board's first glance. If you guys want to change, you want to add it, or if you want to act on it, that's fine, but we always try to give the option if there's questions tonight to give us any type of legwork and go back, get you the answers that you have and come back and do formal appointment. But you, you guys can move forward if you want. We just in the past, it's been, this is a first glance at the composition of, of a new board and I, I gave you that information earlier that there's already language in the building committee that you can add people, but you guys can proceed in any manner you wish to choose.
No, I mean, it's in here. We can do it October 19th. I don't have a problem with that. And maybe we'll actually get some taxpayers who would maybe want to step forward also. So we could
If I may, just I want to go back to Andy's comment if, if I may. So Andy, are you suggesting that it's two paths to take? One is the building committee forms the committee outside of the review of the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Selectmen. Does it this way? Am I misunderstanding that?
Yeah, I just want to make sure you know there's an option already available when we form the building committee. If there was going to be a project like this that came along, there's already language in there where you could add or. Or modify a committee other than just the building committee, but if you want to take a formal action. Like it's in front of us here today, you can do that as well.
One of the things that we could consider. Is, I think the. The sensitivity and magnitude of this project probably warrants. The Board of Selectmen weighing in on, on sort of the next steps associated with this. So I like that path. I, I would be comfortable. And maybe we just have a look at the wording for a second. Maybe we don't have to include the. Members at this juncture, but maybe potentially in the member section of the last two lines, but. Maybe we could consider the motion as we're agreeing to move forward with this committee. So you guess eliminate the last sentence and then maybe the members. Sentence and the to be appointed. I'm just thinking that we, unless there's disagreement, why don't we move forward with at least considering this as a next step? So we're showing progress and, and then maybe we put a date out there for the, you know, for the members to be approved. So we establish, we do establish the committee. And then we maybe set the next meeting to. Vote on the members. As opposed to taking no action. Just, just a thought.
Tiffany, Mark? I mean, I'm, I'm easy either, whatever, I mean.
Yeah, that's fine with me. It's fine with me to establish the committee and then consider members at the next juncture.
I think that's a great idea. Good, good point, Peter. Let's establish the committee and then populate it with members.
Maybe, maybe make a suggestion for a friendly amendment and then eliminate the last sentence of the motion, which is this committee will become active and upon passage of the motion. We don't have, we don't have the members formed yet, so maybe we shouldn't do that. We don't have the members formed yet. So maybe we think about that as the motion. And then we, we look to. Finalize the appointment of the members on the October nineteenth meeting. So I don't know if that all has to be in the motion. I'm not sure administratively how you want to do that.
Well, I, I can. I can amend my motion to have it end at. Timely communications to the public at large and end it at that point. And then. I don't know.
In the first sentence, we could just say establish instead of appoint. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen establish.
That's a good idea.
Okay. And then end it at what point?
Just as you said, after at large.
Okay, so. I can do a friendly amendment, correct? Don't want to do it wrong. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen. Establish a nine-member Department of Public Works Action Committee consisting of members of the Hebron. Public Building Committee, the Hebron Public Works Building Project Survey Committee. And interested Hebron taxpayers. The purpose of this committee will be to. Handle the day-to-day activities involved in determining costs, location, and all required plans. Required to construct a new Department of Public Works facility for the town of Hebron. It will be the committee's responsibility to report all activities to the Board of Selectmen. Have all expenditures approved in a proper, by top proper town bodies. And to prepare and publish timely communications to the public at large.
I do have a, it's Donna. I do have a question on that last part because it. It conflicts a bit with what we discussed at our last meeting about. How we would communicate updates on public works.
Right.
For the group of people that indicated interest from the survey. We had talked about sending them out through our weekly management reports. So I would want to make sure that we're all very clear on. The new committee or the action committee and how they would be. Preparing and publishing the timely communications if those would be. Go on, Peter.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. I was, I was just thinking. You could simply say that you could add to report activities to the town manager's office and the Board of Selectmen. Then the town manager by proxy would be in essence saying, well, thanks for the information. Now I'm going to push it out. To the public. So your charge is the same. You have new information. And you're now charged with putting it forward as you, as we originally agreed to. So I think we could address that by saying that we're going to provide an update to the town manager's office as well as to the Board of Selectmen. And how you disseminate that information would then be consistent with a policy that you previously agreed to.
So you're suggesting that we take out to the public at large and replace it with the Board of Selectmen and town manager?
Right, then, then we could decide, you could decide, you wouldn't have to change what we already agreed to because you would disseminate that out to the public and then.
That, that's perfect. Yeah, that cleans it up.
Okay.
I, I have an additional friendly amendment, or mainly it's a friendly question. If we have dissolved said Public Works Building Project Survey Committee, would it be more apt to say? Consisting of members of the Public Building Committee, former members of the Hebron. I just think as it says right now, it indicates that that committee is still active and it is not. We just disbanded it tonight. So I'd suggest. Former into that.
That's a good point.
The. What was your word again, Tiffany? I'm sorry.
Oh, it would just read, the only thing I'm inserting is one word, and it would just read the former Hebron Public Works Building Project because that committee has been disbanded.
Fine, fine. Okay, I was just trying to. Thank you. Okay, and then, so we would add former to in front of the Hebron Public Works Project. Survey Committee and timely communications. To the town manager's office.
To the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager.
Board of Selectmen and Town Manager's Office. For dissemination. Okay. So are we set? Do we have those changes, Donna?
We do, thank you.
Okay. Good, okay. All in favor of the amended proposed motion? Please indicate by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealie, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Ian Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, and then we are also talking about Public Works Building Committee Project Next Steps. And Andy, did you want to jump in on this?
Well, once again, the Public Works Building Project Next Steps. What we introduced was a correspondence from Chairman Larson that went to the building committee. I think Donna sent that out. I think we have that added to the packet. And then I'm pretty sure Tiffany had a question regarding moving forward. With the property in Old Colchester Road about. Making sure the new committee looks at that with also keeping the transfer station intact.
So, you know, just since it was my letter. As I have said, I'm just trying to get some thoughts out there, just, just to try to get everybody's noodles. Maybe working and, and whatever, and. Personally, I don't care if people use this to light their wood stove. But I just, just trying to get something out there, just trying to keep things going forward. Tiffany, to your point, one of the things I actually thought about, but I haven't had a chance to get down and measure. And I need to talk to somebody smart also, is if the garbage. Container. Could be. Spun ninety degrees. Could the, you know, and getting rid of the shack. Put, you know, the, the upper building. Could both of those, those dumpsters be side by side? And I just don't know. I mean, right now, it, it goes. You know, parallel with, with those big concrete blocks. If it could be made perpendicular, I don't know if, as I say, if there's room for it or not. The other thing, if, and again, I talk about three phase. If we bring three phase to that facility. Right now, there is a lot of electrical equipment that is there that. Changes the single-phase service, which is what. Services all of, or most of all, of the old Colchester Road. If we had three phase there, that would remove a lot of that other. Electrical equipment that's, that's there to. Make the motors think that there's actually three phase. I don't know if that makes any kind of sense.
Yeah, I think, I think what's really great here is that. We're all recognizing that we need to be a little creative, right? We have to come up and think about. Ways we can, you know, create a safe working environment for our employees while also acknowledging the realities of what may or may not pass. So I appreciate reading this. There's some good food for thought in here and certainly good food for thought. For the new committee that will be establishing. I think my only point, as I've said to Andy, is I want to make sure that we develop proposals. That don't just, you know, remove the transfer station in its entirety. I think it's pretty clear people in town enjoy that service. I think. People enjoy going there, and so I think we've also got to, we need to be creative and think about how we can. Develop proposals that keep the transfer station open. So that was just my only point, that I want to make sure. All avenues are discussed by this committee and how we can be creative. And think about how we can address all needs as, as well as we can with a proposal that passes referendum. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Dan, I, I think that's a good idea, you. Considering the idea of reconfiguring things. I, I think that that whole place could be made more efficient. And the use of limited space. Be, be used in a better fashion than it is right now, especially because. Nobody really wants to have public works anywhere else but there, so. I, I think, as Tiffany said, creativity and using that space. Effectively is going to be the, the, the charge going forward, so I agree with you.
Thank you. Okay, Peter, or anybody else? Okay, moving. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm good with what everyone's talking.
Okay, okay. Moving on would be. You say, is there anything for eight D at this point, or has it been basically discussed?
Well, just an update with, with all the rain that we've had. This has been asked, but on the agenda, so I'll make sure I report on it. They did get the coating on the main roof of the main building down there, and then on the bottom. Of the containment area that was brought to our attention has secondary containment to comply with the inspection that we had. So they're making progress. Unfortunately, the weather and the type of work that needed to be done on those two items were held back. We continue to make progress on the list. So there's the update.
Perfect, okay. Anybody have any questions or anything? Okay. That brings us to. Eight E.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, eight E. This is a big one. Establish a Charter Revision Commission in Charge. Excuse me. Attaches a proposed charter revision schedule and the list of items identified. Thus far for inclusion in the charter for the commission. The selectman should work to finalize the charge. Recruitment of members will be conducted during the next month. With the Charter Revision Commission being appointed hopefully on November second, two thousand and twenty-three with a proposed. Resolution.
Okay. I'll read the resolution and open it up for discussion. Be resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen has determined that it is appropriate to establish a Charter Revision Commission. Consisting of seven members pursuant to the provisions of the Hebron Town Charter. Chapter. Twelve, section one, two, zero, seven, and Connecticut General Statutes, chapter ninety-nine, Concerning Municipal Charter and Specials Act. Volunteers will be solicited to serve on the Charter Revision Commission. And the appointment of the Charter Revision Commission will take place on November second, two thousand and twenty-three. And then following is a lot of the. Legalities of the Charter Commission. Open up for comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealie, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Ian Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Our next thing would be the call for a special town meeting. And approve a moderator.
Yes, so, Mr. Chairman, if I may, a special town meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October twenty-sixth. Two thousand and twenty-three at seven P M. in the Douglas Library Community Room. Douglas Library of Hebron twenty-two Main Street, Hebron, Connecticut, to consider the following. Excuse me. Approval of O'Connor property, Chittenden Road slash Holy Road acquisition. Number two would be to approve Saint Peter's Church Street acquisition. Number three would be to approve the Abbey Drive property transfer. Number four, approve the debt management contribution. Number five, Housing Choices Committee and Ordinance. Number six, O'Connor Open Space Grant Application, I'm sorry, acceptance. And number seven is Hebron Green. To Pendleton Drive Pedestrian Bridge Project, steep grant acceptance with a proposed resolution.
Okay. Be resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve. The meeting call for the special town meeting scheduled for Thursday, October twenty-sixth. Two thousand and twenty-three at seven P M. as presented. And be further resolved that Kevin Connors be appointed moderator and Joe Crist be appointed alternate moderator. Opening it up for discussion? Any discussion? I have one question. Is the town meeting where we have to have a minimum of thirty registered voters? Am I right? Okay, so we have to have twenty-five registered voters, just, just to let people know. In order to be. A proper town meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealie, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Ian Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Our next thing is the. No, actually, it would be any other old business. So is there any other old business at this time? Not that I know of. Okay. Moving on to new business, the Parks and Recreation Park Policies Update. I'm going to read the motion and then open it up for discussion. Andy, did you want to discuss this first, or?
Yeah, let me jump into it, and it's a proposed resolution, so the people in the public can know what we're talking about. We also have Ken Jarden available for questions. From the chairman of that commission, but attaches the proposed changes to the Parks and Recreation Park and Open Spaces Policies. As recommended by the Parks and Recreation Commission. This update has been.
This doc- update has been many months in the making and has been reviewed by the town attorney, members of the Parks and Recreation Commission, who will be in attendance tonight, review the response, answer any questions, and then there's a proposed resolution.
Okay, so I'll read the resolution and then, uh, open it up for comments. And I do have, I do have a couple. Um, be it resolved that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen, that pursuant to the Town Code, Chapter two seventy-two, Section two seventy-two dash one, the park and open spaces policies attachment two seventy-two A are hereby amended and approved as presented or amended. So I'll open it up first off to the board. Does anybody have any, uh, discussion or?
Mr. Chairman, I'm interested. You have comments. I'm interested in yours as a starting point, if you don't mind.
Sure. Um, well, I have, I have a few. Uh, first off, uh, section four, uh, fourteen, uh, that I would add, it will actually, let me start at the top. Um, well, section fourteen bicycles. I would suggest adding that bike paths may be closed due to environmental erosion concerns where the, uh, continuation of such activities will cause harm to the ground. Um, so, you know, that's, I know that's been a big one. It's been a big concern in, in a lot of the state forests where, you know, uh, mountain bikers literally tear up the ground. They tear up the root system, which leads to, uh, horrible erosion issues. So that would be one thought. Um, did we want to discuss these individually, or do you want me to just throw them all out there?
I mean, you might as well keep going, Mr. Chairman, because I don't have, like, a ton of initial thought on this policy. So it'd be interesting to hear what else you have.
Okay. Section fifteen, horseback riding. I would make a suggestion that horses, that it be changed to horses or other animals which are ridden. And the reason I'm saying that is I know, uh, one of my neighbors up, up the road has, uh, I want to say she has mules that they ride up and down whole valley all the time. Um, so I just, I, you know, then there's donkeys. Uh, I would just hate to limit it to horses only since there are other, uh, you know, animals that people ride. Um, so I just would like to open that up to that. Uh, section twenty-one, uh, firearms. Um, I suggest that that be modified to state that those with proper handgun permits shall be able to carry as allowed by their permit. Um, you know, I know that, uh, the Bruin case through the Supreme Court, uh, brought before the Supreme Court basically states that, you know, people who are legally able to have a firearm shall not be infringed upon that right, is basically what it kind of says. Um, so those are.
That's why. So unless it's raining.
So those are my, um, I guess, three things, or, yeah.
It's Donna. Um, I'm going to just jump in on that firearms one. Other, um, one item we had identified there that could become a problem is just weapons of any kind at the end of that sentence. That a, a pocket knife that a lot of people carry when they're out hiking could be considered a weapon. So we want to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for something that we can't enforce or that people are, you know, unaware of their, they would be violating the, the regulations.
Well, I will be, I will be.
And, 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 okay, and I agree with that also. Uh, as I say, if somebody has a legal permit, uh, I, I don't feel that it is our right to infringe that individual of, you know, doing a law-abiding, uh, action. And to be honest, also, when you're out in the woods, um, you know, there are different situations where someone may need to, uh, take action to protect themselves, whether it's a rabid raccoon. Uh, you know, it, it does happen. We had in Lebanon, although I've never really heard all the full story where apparently a gentleman was, uh, attacked by a bobcat. Uh, that was one a couple of years ago, I want to say it was. Um, I can't remember exactly when. Um, I just hate to, to stop somebody from doing something that they are legally allowed by, you know, state and federal laws to do.
Uh, Dan?
Yes, sir.
I, I agree with you and Donna. From a law enforcement standpoint, there would be unenforceable. Um, there's really no law a police officer could use, um, to have the parks and rec um, language supersede state and federal law. So I, I don't even think you could do that. Maybe you need a, a lawyer's opinion, but the, the police really couldn't enforce that. And not, not to, not to raise too much concern, but you know, over, over the years, people have come to me and said, whether on the airline trail, hiking, biking, anywhere, um, they have concerns about, uh, being attacked or being accosted by somebody. So, um, that's a place where you probably, um, should, if you feel comfortable, be able to defend yourself. So I agree with, uh, I agree with you. I agree with Donna that you, you, you can't stop people from having a pocket knife or, um, some knife that's re- related to camping or survival. So I'm not sure what that language should even be in there. So I feel.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, it was my understanding that the town attorney actually did review this document and all the changes in its entirety. So, um, you know, Andy, can you confirm that the town attorney looked at this and from a legal perspective seemed fine to bring to the board? I just would like some clarity on that because it did indicate in the beginning of the discussion, the town attorney did review this.
You're correct in your statement. He did review it. And then it went back to the Parks and Rec Commission after the town attorney's recommendations. And then they, I'm pretty kensy, I don't want to put words in kensy mouth, but I'm pretty sure he agreed to what the town attorney recommended.
Andy, can I, can I just clarify what, so wha- what property would we be excluding people from carrying firearms or knives or camping equipment that could be construed as a weapon? What, what property are we talking about?
Craig, you want to jump in on that?
Yeah, sure. Um, so these policies are for all Hebron, our town of Hebron, parks and open space. Um, so the attorney had, had put something in there, um, about firearms. He didn't, he didn't say we had to remove it. He was a little, he had the same kind of concerns that you guys did. Um, but he did not recommend either removing it or keeping it either way.
Yes, I think it's just, I mean, it's a good question.
So that, that, that says a lot right there, and you, you know, attorneys have specialties in certain things. I'm telling you, from a law enforcement standpoint, that, that no cop is going to go in there and arrest somebody who has a legal permit to carry a firearm in a park on the airline trail. Uh, just, it's not happening. It's, you, you'd be in trouble if you did that. I, I wouldn't. Yeah.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear what you have to say, Mark, because I was talking with Ken earlier and, uh, we both said that we were kind of interested to see your perspective on it.
Yeah, there's only, there's only a few, y- you know, obviously you can't have a firearm in a school. Uh, there's certain, um, private institutions that can bar you from having a weapon. I know there was even a case about, uh, churches not wanting somebody to have a weapon in there. And then the other argument is, you know, we want you to have a weapon because we're, we're soft targets for active shooters and depraved people. So, um, I, 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 and I'm not a gun, not by any means. Uh, I'm not a hunter. I carry a gun because it's my professional duty to carry one and I want to be good with it. But, um, I, I, I really, I, I, I don't think you can bar somebody from doing that. And I, there's not a cop I know who would arrest somebody based on parks and rec saying, hey, we, we prohibit people from having guns here.
So I think our, our biggest concern was more so the parks, obviously with Burnt Hill and veterans with the amount of people we have utilizing those parks on a daily basis and the amount of children. Um, one of the other concerns I think that was brought up was in open space. Um, you know, some people thinking they can bring guns anywhere they want and if they're setting up target practice or, or whatever else. So maybe that's something else we have to look in as maybe a, a, a different clause in there about, uh, I, I, I don't know, something about actually using our open space for, uh, you know, firing these, these weapons.
Yeah, I mean, I, I completely agree with you. Weapons have to be handled safely and in a safe environment. You shouldn't be anywhere near the airline trail, a park or any other residential thing. And sometimes the public gets carried away with their right to shoot in their backyard. I think that's my personal opinion, but, um, as far as that, people walking around with guns displayed or carrying a rifle at a Little League game or a soccer game, that's absurd. Um, if you're going to carry.
Actually, uh, jumping in, Mark, as of October first, there shall be no open carry in the state of Connecticut. Unless, of course, you're a police officer or what have you.
Right, so, and, and, and I've always been in agreement with that. Um, so as a police officer, you come and people are carrying guns, who, who, how, how do you know who's a law-abiding citizen and who the bad guy is? You know, a, a gun should be concealed, not to, shouldn't be there to alarm people or have some macho statement that you're making. So that, that was a good law and I'm glad, glad you brought that up, Dan, so.
Yeah, and that's why, as I said, in that, in that's, in that section, I was stating that quote unquote, there, uh, the modi- modified to state that those with proper handgun permits shall be able to carry as allowed by their permit. Um, so in other words, you have to be concealed, you know, you have to have a state, uh, handgun permit, you know, da-da-da-da-da, right down, right down the whole line of, of, uh, laws and, and restrictions that come into play when you are carrying, you know, a handgun. So it wouldn't be anybody, they'd have to have the proper licensing permits, what have you.
Agreed, Dan, agreed. One, one hundred percent. And Donna's comment about, uh, a knife could be construed as a weapon. So that language is too vague. So what are you going to say? You can't have a military-type assault knife, but you can have, uh, you know, you, you just, when you get bogged down by language, that and you include things like that, it's too hard to enforce.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, Peter.
Yeah, I, yeah, everyone else is expressing opinion. Obviously, I, I don't have the expertise that Mark has, but yeah, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with this for the reasons expressed. Um, and so I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support the wording as it's, uh, as it's currently articulated. And not that it matters, but, you know, I have, uh, when I hike and I hike a bit and I'm in the woods, uh, and I have a legal permit to carry a concealed weapon, I do so uh, for the reasons expressed, where something in the middle of, you know, a hundred acres and we have our, my neighbor just the other day said the bobcat came across our yard. We just live on a regular street. Uh, or a bear, or someone goes after my dog or some, I, it's, I think it'd be difficult to enforce, as Mark said, and, and frankly, I don't think it's unreasonable uh, when you have the proper training and the proper license and, and you're abiding by the law.
So I could suggest, I can suggest, if I may, Mr. Chair, we can send this back and I think the committee and the parks, uh, directors heard the concerns and we can get this modified and bring it back. Is there any other concerns that you had?
Uh, nope. As I say, um, you know, I, I as a, uh, yeah, the smoking one, and I understand, um, you know, everybody wants to see people's cigarette butts and all that, you know, stuff everywhere. Um, I guess, I, I I will agree that we should probably try to not allow smoking, uh, at least in the parks. Um, yeah. Yeah, I would wish that people would clean up after themselves. It would be a whole different discussion, but sadly, people many times don't. So.
Well, and there's a real safety issue. I mean, I'm not a fan of allowing smoking anywhere in public. Putting that aside for a second, there's a significant safety issue, um, with, uh, one of the largest causes of structural fires. And this is the business that I'm in, uh, is what we would describe as careless disposal of smoking material. So the idea that we could potentially be putting some of our property and residents at risk, um, there's a safety issue beyond, and I, beyond that, but I'm just saying there's also a significant safety issue. We shouldn't allow smoking in our public parks.
So, uh, I mean, that was all I had. I, you know, the basic, the, the big three was the, uh, just expanding the horseback riding one, um, to include other animals which may be ridden, uh, the bicycle one, um, you know, only because, and as I say, I know we've, uh, Andy, you can concur, we've had, uh, a few residents, uh, you know, rightfully so, being upset over the damage that was done. You know, basically it was more in the state forests with, uh, indiscriminate bicycle riding, mountain bike riding, um, you know, off the trails and, and, uh, you know, it does do a terrible, terrible amount of damage to the, to the, uh, root systems and then the firearms. Did anybody else have anything else that they wanted to discuss on that?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to applaud you for bringing up mule and donkey in the same discussion. Thought that was.
As I, yeah. As I say, we, we have them.
I don't remember the difference between the two, so I just thought.
Yes. Yeah, so, um.
I know we're speaking serious all the time, but I just thought that was.
So, anyway, and they are here in town. Okay. So then that's going to go back, Andy, and, and get readdressed?
Yeah, I don't think that's a surprise to the committee. We brought those concerns up when I first read it.
Okay. Uh, our next is, uh, Andy?
Nine B, I have as next. And that is to schedule a public hearing for proposed ordinance establishing the Hebron Housing Choices Advisory Committee. The proposed ordinance establishes the Hebron Housing Choices Advisory Committee will be presented to the October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three special town meeting for adoption. As part of the ordinance adoption process, a public hearing is required. The proposed date of the public hearing is Tuesday, October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at six thirty P M. Prior to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. The draft ordinance establishes the Hebron Housing Choices Advisory Committee is attached, and then there's a proposed motion.
Okay, I'll read the motion and then open it up for discussion. Uh, move to the Hebrew Board of Selectmen, schedule a virtual public hearing for Thursday, October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at six thirty P M. To consider the proposed ordinance establishing the Hebron Housing Choices Advisory Committee. Uh, is there any comment?
Andy, just a question. We, we have a, we have a Hebron Housing Authority, right, Andy?
We do.
So.
This would be different.
I must have not, I, I, it is, I, I imagine it is. That's why, why I'm asking, maybe I missed something or I wasn't paying attention. I'm not sure exactly what their charge is and what they're supposed to do. It sounds like a good idea by the words, but what, what, what are they charged to do?
The present one or, or the one we're proposing?
The one you're proposing.
This would be a new committee and as it reads, if, if you, I don't get a chance to read through the ordinance, it says.
No, I, I didn't. Just, just briefly, uh.
Yeah. Man. It establishes the town, uh, Housing Choices Advisory Committee. The purpose of the Housing Choices Advisory Committee will serve as a planning and advisory body and, and center of expertise and communication with the objective to ensure Hebron offices a full range of housing choices for all households. The committee will work through the Board of Selectmen in coordination with other boards and commissions. The committee will work through the Board of Selectmen and coordination with other boards and commissions and departments. While also engaging businesses, organizations, residents on matters pertaining to housing diversity and affordability. So that's a different charge than the original.
Okay, that's, uh, thank you for clarifying. That sounds like a good idea. I just, I, I hadn't, uh, I, I must have not seen that in the correspondence.
That's okay.
Okay, any other comment? Okay, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Tiffany, are you still on?
Yep, I'm eating dinner, Tiffany Teal.
Oh, okay. Mark?
Mark Fabera, aye.
Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye.
Okay, um, our next item would be the draft agenda for the October 19th, 2023 meeting. And so again, as, as always, um, if you have anything to, to add on to it or whatever. Let town staff know so that can get added. Probably the biggest thing and, um, hopefully I'm, I'm writing it down. But hopefully we'll get a reminder that we do have that 6:30, uh, meeting. Prior to our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting. So just something to, to remember.
Most.
Was, thank you. I used to have a mind, I just don't remember where I put it. Okay, our next item would be our consent, actually, before I go too crazy, any other new business? And I can't think of any. So our next item would be our consent agenda items. And, uh, these, the Board of Select may approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein. As if individually adopted and we have the approval of the minutes of September 21st, 2023, our regular meeting. And then the attacks refunds as listed. So did anybody review the, uh, regular meeting minutes and have any, uh, changes, additions, deletions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Uh, Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Uh, Mark?
Mark Fabera, aye.
Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, and with that, that gets us into our liaison reports. Starting, uh, I don't know, Tiffany, just starting with you tonight, so ladies and gentlemen.
Sure, so Open Space met last night. It was a quick meeting on, basically the focus is going to be on the upcoming town meeting, right? There's a lot of properties that are, that are coming up that the Open Space Committee Commission had recommended to us to set a town meeting for. And the Open Space, uh, Commission has also finished its annual report, which should be in your inboxes. That's what I have at this time, thank you.
Okay, uh, Peter?
I think from the Parks and Rec, uh, Board of Finance, I'll provide a quick update based on the notes from attending the meeting. And then I, uh, I see the chair, chairperson is on, so Diane, if I miss something and we want to expand. I, and then again indulge the, the board to allow her to, uh, add anything at the end if I've missed something. The Finance Director's Report seems like we're relatively on pace relative to revenue and back tax collection, expense budget, they reviewed that. There was, um, a discussion on the animal control issue. So for the Conley case, we all aware of that and the significant expenditures associated with that. It's been turned over to the town attorney, but it's just a continued, uh, cost that we're having to, to absorb there. So there was discussion around that. Just as reminded, there was 71 animals impacted by that and, uh, there's 28 left, but we're paying the boarding fee. So that's what continues to, we're getting some reimbursement, but just some discussion around that. Obviously our Board of Finance, uh, I'm sorry, our Finance Director's Retirement was also a discussion point. As well as, uh, some concerns about staffing going forward in that area and making sure we staff properly in the town to support that. There was discussion around, um, additional transfers of dollars to the non, non-l lasting fund of the Board of Education. And that, um, the additional funding requested disjuncture was denied. And then, uh, some discussion around the 2022 audit review, some findings, uh, and some dialogue around that. So a very substantive, uh, meeting and a lot covered in. Diane, I don't know if you're still with us, but, uh, if there's anything that you wish to expand upon or I omitted in my update. You're welcome to, uh, to add anything if you wish.
Peter, thanks for the update. This is Diane and I actually was not at the meeting. So thank you for providing this update to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, thank you, Diane. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great, thank you. Mark?
Yeah, a, a report from Ram and, and broader than that, um, November 7th or 8th, we're having a meeting to discuss. What happens in the event of an active shooter or catastrophe at a school. Or so it's related to reunification of children and their families. So Public Works takes place, the state police, Hebron Police, me as the active shooter coordinator, Andy as the town. They have duties there, social workers have duties. So we're all going to sit down and try to come up with the best plan available. And that will become part of our emergency, uh, management plan. So there's a lot of things that have been related to this that the public doesn't really know about or even, uh, us in politics don't know. And I just happen to be involved in it, so I know. So whenever there's a catastrophe in town, um, buses are going to bring children to the Lions Fairgrounds. And, um, there's going to be directives that parents come there and all the appropriate, uh, responses that we can have there to, to make. A bad situation, uh, somewhat coordinated and, and effective, uh, we're, we're coming up with that. And we've, haven't really done this in my 18 years here. So kind of excited that we're trying to refine this plan and have a tabletop discussion how we can do it.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, I have a question too.
Go ahead, Peter.
No, no, you go first. I'm just saying, I might, I, I want to ask Mark something too.
Okay, um, what am I, what my question was is, um, understanding the Lions Fairgrounds. Uh, and it's a great facility to do things, but one of the problems, of course, has been snow removal. In, in the middle of winter, of course, you have snow. Are there, uh, plans that are going to be put in place where they maintain a certain amount of, of, uh. Plowed right aways through, through the fairgrounds so that, and I'm not sure how you're having, you know, it's set up. But where the buses could go in, drop the kids off, you know, stage them, whatever, and stage all of those parents. I mean, I just, I look at all the cars, even at Hebron L, Gilead Hill School, it's just a lot of cars. Yeah. Yeah, I, I just, I'm just curious, uh, you know, middle of February, something happens, where are you going to put them?
Dan, that's a good point and I'll bring that up at the meeting. Public Works, people don't realize, but Public Works is an integral part of this because they use their trucks to direct and block traffic. And, um, support safe laneways for people operating in. So I'll, I'll bring up that question. I, I know they have to plow because the buses park at, at the Lions. So, um, you're right, they'll have to be, be a bigger area and I'll, I'll bring that up. So we have some kind of contingency plan in the, in the event that, uh, nothing's plowed over there. Good point.
Thank you, uh, Peter?
This is, I don't expect an answer, but I wanted to ask maybe Andy if you could provide, uh, or, or get some information specific to, um. The, the insurance, um, one of those common coverages now purchases active shooter and workplace violence coverage. That provides a myriad of, of, of expertise and expense reimbursement for a significant amount of things that. Will not be typically contemplated or be able to be handled by a town or a municipality or, uh, or any business, frankly. And those items really need to be addressed somehow. And I, my question is, uh, is that coverage part, part of, uh, the insurance coverage? And if so, I'd be interested in seeing what that looks like. I only mentioned that because I have some expertise in that specifically, so. And I've seen firsthand, uh, claims associated with schools, uh, specifically and how, um, and. If they have the right coverage, the response is there and the coverage is there and how if they don't, it's a significant burden on the town and. And all the people impacted by a tragedy such as that. So I just, just want to better understand that. Thank you.
Okay.
Would you like me to answer that?
Yes, please.
Of course I don't have the policy in front of me. I know you're aware of that, but if you could just shoot me that in an email, we could go through to our insurance carrier, look what we have for mass incident. Insurance and see if that covers exactly what you're talking about. If it doesn't, we could review that and, uh, have that discussion again.
Great, thank you.
Okay. The only one I have would be historic properties and Andy already mentioned that the, uh, roof is finally done. I actually drove by, I want to say it was yesterday and it looks great. It, it just looks fantastic. Long time in coming, the weather has not been friendly for any outdoor activities. But, uh, that's great and, um, so that's all I have with that. So with that done, I believe our next thing is public comment again.
Dan, I just, I have one more thing under liaison reports, if I may.
Please, yes, please.
I didn't want to steal Chairman, uh, Del Russo's thunder, but, um, a very important meeting per charter is going to take place on October 17th. It's a joint meeting between the Boards of Finance, the town, and hopefully we invite Ram this year. To give us a projection on how we're going to facilitate our budgets moving forward. That's again, per charter, that's October 17th at seven, 7 PM at the Douglas Library.
I'm sorry, I'm writing, I get very, very quiet when I'm writing. So, yeah, I knew that was coming up. That's what we used to call the old, the all boards meeting. Yeah, so. And that is an in-person meeting.
Yes.
If I remember right, so, okay. With that being said, and there's nothing from, um. The sewer, um, Chatham Health? Nothing new on, from there or anything?
No, I mean, there's, they're dealing with they have to deal with, they got a little bit of West. Clean virus or whatever that's called, they're dealing with that, they're sending, uh, notifications. But, um, other than that, it's business as usual.
Okay, oh, and I wanted to say I attended the AHM Dinner. What a really, really good feed they put on. Just a great event, one of their, one of their fundraisers that they do. You know, met a lot of people, people I knew, people didn't know, but it was still just a great day or a great evening. So with that being said, open it up for public comment again. And seeing none?
I don't see any here tonight, it's pretty quiet.
Okay, well, with that, uh, make a move for adjournment?
Move to adjourn at 8:26 PM.
Thank you. Everybody's happy, okay? Please stay safe, I guess it's going to be another rainy weekend. So again, try to be safe. Good night, thank you.